Good evening, everyone. Welcome. It is Wednesday, August 17th, 2022. This is a regular session of Bloomington Common Council. Good to see everyone. May I ask Deputy Clerk Stahl to please call the roll?
Councilmember Rosenberg.
Here.
Sims. Scamblory.
Here.
Sandberg.
Here.
Rallo.
Here.
Flaherty.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Piedmont Smith.
Here.
Thank you. And Council President Sandberg could not be with us in person tonight, and so she asked me to preside, so that's why I'm in this seat this evening. With that, let's go to an agenda summation. We have the approval of minutes this evening for March 3rd, 2021. We'll then move into reports from council members. We then have a report from the mayor and city offices, one from Transportation Demand Manager Jeffrey Jackson. We'll have reports from council committees, if any. Then we'll have our first period of public comment. After that, we'll move to appointments to boards and commissions. I believe there are several this evening. We'll move then into legislation for second readings and resolutions. Included there is ordinance 2221 to amend Title VIII of the Bloomington Municipal Code entitled Historic Preservation and Protection to Establish a Historic District Regarding Bethel AME Church and Parsonage, Bethel AME Owner and Petitioner. We also have under second readings and resolutions Resolution 2215 expressing support for the production, for the protection of reproductive rights. We don't have any legislation for first reading this evening, and we'll, so we'll then move into additional public comment, our second period of public comment. We'll then take up matters of council schedule, and then we'll adjourn. So with that, let's launch in.
Madam Vice President, I move the approval of minutes for March 3rd, 2021, regular session.
Second.
And this evening, are there any additional corrections? I noted that there were a few typos corrected. Yes, councilmember?
I have one I noticed late, and that is on page three, Housing Preservation Commission should read Historic Preservation Commission. This is, I think, Councilmember Rosenberg was making a motion for an appointment to that commission.
Thank you. Are there additional corrections? Seeing none, we have a motion to approve. In a second, we'll be doing roll call votes tonight because we have some colleagues on Zoom. So would you call the roll on the motion to approve as corrected?
Councilmember Volin.
Yes.
Sims.
I'm sorry, I have to ask.
Yes.
Sandberg.
Yes.
Rallo.
Yes.
Flaherty.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Piedmont Smith.
Yes.
And Rosenberg.
No, I do apologize. I did review those minutes. So if we're voting on minutes, yes, to approve, yes.
And did you get Councilmember Rosenberg? I just caught the end of that, so.
I don't know if I heard her. Did she say yes?
Councilmember Rosenberg, could you?
Yes.
Yes. Good. Okay. With that, let's go to councilmember reports. Why don't we start on Zoom this evening, just following the screen as I see people? Councilmember Sandberg?
Thank you. I cannot be with you this evening in person due to the fact that I did finally contact COVID, so I have a couple of more days of sequestering, and I am looking forward to getting back into action after having finally succumbed to this. I will take this opportunity to say that my symptoms are very relatively mild in comparatively speaking to what other people have experienced. And in talking to my doctors, they attribute that to the fact that I do have my vaccines and my boosters. And I am taking the medication that helps mitigate the worst of it. So I am on the mend. I'm not 100%, but I'm well enough to attend this meeting virtually tonight, and will be staying at home for a couple more days. So, thank you.
Thank you. Hope you feel better soon. Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
I have no report. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Rosenberg?
No report. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'll start on my far right. Councilmember Volin?
Yes, thank you. I have two items tonight. One of them, I'd like to observe the passing of Owen Johnson, who was a professor in the former journalism school, now the media school. In the mid-'80s, I had the privilege of taking a class of his in the history of journalism, during which he taught us to see beyond names and dates and to think about, think hard about media as a whole. It was in his class that I first read Neil Postman and learned to question the sources, all the sources of the information that I gathered every day. At 76, he died too young and too suddenly. In recent years, Professor Johnson would find articles from this day in the year 1929 or '30, repeating the words of a then-cub reporter named Ernie Pyle, who was reporting on the aviation beat in Washington, DC at that time, but who would go on to become one of the world's most famous war journalists, and whose statue sits just outside of the media school and just inside the sample gates to this day. Professor Johnson was one of the world's foremost experts on Ernie Pyle. His motto apparently was, "So many projects, so little time." I'm very sorry to miss some of the projects he was working on, always researching, always gathering facts and synthesizing them into brilliant holes. He'll be missed. The other thing I'd like to mention is that I understand that a resolution that I have authored will be scheduled soon that will declare the council's interest in opening up Bloomington Transit to locations outside the city limits. It is not an ordinance. It is just a resolution that will be coming forward in September. And so it simply says that the council is interested in doing it. It's not actually making that change. I'm putting it forward in the hopes that the county will take seriously our intent to work with them to finally make, for example, bus service to Ivy Tech and to Cook a reality, especially considering that thanks to the new local income tax, Bloomington Transit is planning a high-speed east-west route all the way across the city. It's a logical extension of that route, and it will serve many, many people. And I think that the county has, to me at least individually, county officials have expressed their relative interest in coordinating with us and helping fund the extension of that route outside the city. So, but this is just to emphasize that what will be coming in September is a resolution that the council will have the opportunity on, to vote on, to express our intent that we really do mean, you know, what, that we'd like to see Bloomington Transit expanded. Those are my reports. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Sims?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And first of all, I apologize, everyone, for being a little bit late. There was a wreck on West Third Street by the gas station, and they routed us down Basswood all the way to Second. And I didn't break any traffic speeding laws. I'd like my colleagues to understand, but I'm sorry about that. I, too, would like to also offer my condolences to Mr. Owen Johnson and his families. I do a lot of things in this community, and being a Rotarian is one of them. And Owen was one of our very strongest and most dedicated members. Expert on Ernie Pyle, did a lot of journalism things, was our roundabout reporter, just a great guy to talk to. So I offer my condolences as well. Also, while we're there, my friend and colleague and fellow Rotarian as well, Judge Mark Kellum's passed recently, so I'd like to offer condolences to his family as well. His daughter and my son went to school together, so we kind of knew them from years ago, but these were community great contributors. So I just offer my condolences to those. And lastly, again, I want to welcome and thank again our guests, and particularly those from Bethel AME and our Monroe County African-American historian, Ms. Liz Mitchell, for coming again this week. I look forward to hearing from you again, and thanks for taking the time to do what will be somewhat repetitive from last week, but I still think nonetheless is very important. So thank you all for being here. So with that, Madam Chair, I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go to my far left. Councilmember Smith?
Oh, thank you. I just wanted to say, give a shout out to the Utilities Department, who came to my neighborhood in Park Ridge, and they looked over the summit of stormwater issues that the neighborhood's having. And there was three, three staff, Vic Kelson and Catherine and Phil, came and took some measurements and talked to a group of interested people who are having trouble with some water in the neighborhood. And, you know, cities sometimes, you know, we try, and that was a really nice and generous use of their time to come. And so I just wanted to give a shout out to Utilities. That was pretty nice, and hopefully we'll get, we'll get, alleviate some of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Flaherty?
No report this evening. Thank you.
And Councilmember Rallo?
Thank you, Madam Vice President. I would just like to say that our budget hearings are going to begin in just a couple of weeks, and we have a lot of priorities here in the city, but principle among those priorities is compensation for our employees. And we know that inflation is taking its toll nationwide, and of course, in Bloomington. And so it is important that we compensate our city employees to keep pace with inflation. If we do not, then it simply counts as a pay cut. And so I'll be looking closely at compensation above all for the people who do the work to keep the city running. That's my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone. With that, we go to a report from our Transportation Demand Manager, Mr. Jeffrey Jackson. Welcome.
Good evening. It's a pleasure to be here tonight. My name is Jeff Jackson. I'm the Transportation Demand Manager, here to talk about our new Transportation Demand Management Program, which we have branded as Go Bloomington. The city had a Transportation Demand Management Plan done. It was completed in May of 2020. The mission of our TDM is to reduce the number of single-occupant vehicles operating within Bloomington. The benefits of reducing SOVs will decrease carbon emissions, relieve traffic congestion, increase parking capacity. I started on November 1st, 2021. I'm born and raised in Indiana. I have a huge family in Indiana. Graduated my IU in 1985. Hesitate to say that out loud, but major in transportation. I drove a bus at Bloomington Transit, had an internship at Bloomington Transit my junior year of school. After I graduated, I worked for several transit authorities in Florida, in Melbourne, Orlando, Tampa. When I left Florida in the public transportation industry, I was Executive Director for Tri-County Community Rail Authority, which operates commuter rail service from West Palm through Fort Lauderdale to Miami. I then became the COO of American Heritage Railways, which was a private excursion train company that had operations in Colorado, North Carolina, Texas, New Mexico and Mexico. And I was also the Executive Director of the Central Indiana Regional Transportation Authority in Indianapolis. While the bill was passed that allowed locals to pass local income tax increases for transportation expenses, so that bill really funded all the expansion that's happened in Marion County in recent years. So we've had, we've got a lot done. I'm very proud of what we've accomplished. It's been great working in the city, everybody I've been working with has been really good to work with. My first task, November 1st, was to encumber funds and to hire contractors to help us brand our TDM. Most folks don't know what Transportation Demand Management is. In Indianapolis, at Serta, for example, they called their program Commuter Connect. In every community in the country, they, they have their own branding for their TDM programs. We also needed to start a design and implement a new website. And within that website, there is a software matching program that allows people to input data on their origin destinations, so they can do carpool matching and vanpool matching. So that we were fortunate to get those funds budgeted before the end of calendar year '21. And that way, we could hit the ground running with our branding effort in quarter one of 2022. A firm agency out of Wisconsin was hired to prepare our, recommend how we should brand Go Bloomington, our TDM. We branded our TDM as Go Bloomington, and our selected tagline is Mobility Options for a Better Commute. A firm agency was also hired to design, develop, and implement our new website. gobloomington.org is our domain name. Ride Amigos is the company that provides the software matching platform. One of the things that separated them, other than price, from their competitors was the fact they have local DNA. Two of their principals live in Bloomington, the Chief Transportation Officer, the Chief Technical Officer, Ben Dalton, and their Chief Security Officer, Mark Stausberg, both live in Bloomington. So they already had a lot of their base data that we needed up and running. Second effort was to develop a marketing plan, which we're in the process of implementing as we speak. The marketing plan includes the following components. We've got bus ads on the exterior of Bloomington Transit buses. They just started running this week. We're putting banners within the street right away on 10th Street, within the Seven Line on 7th Street. We've got a few on Kirkwood that we're going to be putting up, four around the square, and a half dozen on the Beeline Trail. We're also doing utility bill leaflets, rack cards, posters, online advertising, including paper click ads and social media. We really thought it was important to leverage the city's assets in reducing our expenses when it comes to marketing this new program. Social media platforms include Facebook, Instagram, LinkedIn, and we should be launching those next week. The formal launch for Go Bloomington is September 6th at 2:00 PM in front of City Hall. Council President Sandberg and Deputy Mayor Griffin will both be speaking. I'll be sending out an invitation to everyone next week. We plan on having it at the city square out front. The backdrop will be a Bloomington Transit bus with one of our bus ads on it. We've worked a relationship with Lime, where they're introducing e-bikes. The Public Utilities Board approved their license recently, and they've, we've agreed to co-brand their e-bikes with our Go Bloomington stickers on their baskets. So we're looking forward to having that at the launch as well. They'll be hosting what they call as a Ride Academy, but so they'll have a handful of e-bikes there for folks to demo those down the Beeline or Seven Line, and they'll be doing giveaways with Lime bike helmets and so on and so forth. Commute with Enterprise is the company that provides van pools, vans for vanpool services around the country. They supply the vans for Serta in Indianapolis, for example. And they'll have a van here as well, and we'll have it co-branded with their logo and Go Bloomington's new logo on there as well. So we'll send everybody an invite, hope to see as many as you can that can make it for that event. Just a couple more slides. This is one of the last pages on our website, and is, I thought it was very important to have a participation page for our employer business and community participants. Didn't want to call them sponsors or partners. These are folks that, it doesn't cost anything to participate. We're not looking for money at this point. We just, these are the people that, that are integral to get us to where we are today and will be key in our success moving forward. I'd really like to point out Catalent, as an employer, early on committed to allow us and help us promote Go Bloomington with their employees. We've got a formal commitment from Indiana University as well, and IU Health. And over the course of the year, I'll be meeting with every employer in the, in the county, or the city at least. Next slide, please. Some of the metrics, you know, this is a new start. I've done new starts in private and public sector. I attacked this as a, as a new start. So we've really got to gather a lot of base information, but our obvious goals are to reduce carbon emissions, increase car parking capacity. These are all spinoffs of reducing single-occupant vehicles, increase walking, biking, transit ridership, both Bloomington Transit and IU Campus Bus. Micro-mobility includes the e-scooters and the new e-bikes, and I think Bird and Vio is going to be introducing e-bikes as well. And of course, the new offering is carpool, vanpooling, and telecommuting has really had a huge impact on reducing single-occupant vehicles, and I believe it's here to stay, and it's a positive way to make positive strides with reducing SOVs. Some of the goals I've included in our 2023 budget that you're all considering is secure federal funding with no less than a 50-50 federal match by the end of the year. We're, I'll be talking to the NPO about some carbon reduction formula funding that's provided through the FHWA. That's new funding. We're a new entity, and we're specifically called out to be eligible for those funds. So I hope that, if not in 2023, soon thereafter, we'll be able to secure that federal funding to match and leverage against our local general funds. Another goal is, I'm going to be out speaking to at least one employer group a week, every week, just like I'm talking to you today, introducing Go Bloomington. We want to get the word out. Want to collaborate with Parking Service and the Parking Commission. I've spoke with those folks once, and we'll get involved with them again and see what we can do to be creative on a strategy for parking rates. And the goal is implement 25 carpools and five vanpools by the end of quarter four of 2023. So I'd love to answer any questions you might have.
Yes, thanks for the report. Good to see you again.
Sure.
Small questions first. What role does Upland play? I saw their logo up there.
Well, I actually had them, if you went online right now, they're not on there. We're planning an event May 6th at Switchard Park.
So it's promotional, in other words?
Yes, yeah. I want to have the wide array of refreshments for the event. It's going to be May 6th.
That, that's, that answers the question. It's fine. Secondly, Go Express was okay with the name Go Bloomington?
Yes. I, I reached out to them before we landed on that. Several folks thought that that might be an issue. I've talked to them. If you notice, they were included on our participant page. I'm working with them right now to add a layer that will show their fixed route between local hotels and Indianapolis Airport, because that's part of our mission of reducing SOV between those two locations. And, and we want to promote them like we are every other public and private transportation provider.
Could we get the slides back up on the screen? Was Miller or whoever's running Greyhound now part of that list? I didn't see the whole.
No, I haven't talked to them yet. This is not the end. This is the beginning. I, you know, we're, I've been on the job 10 months. We're launching formally September 6th. I certainly will reach out to them. They may have regularly scheduled service like that that I'm not aware of, but I'll certainly make sure I get them on my list.
I mean, they stop at the transit center, so I'm assuming that BT would know, but I'd be curious to know what they say.
Yeah. In talking with John Connell at BT, my understanding there's more of a charter bus operator, but I honestly, my easy answer is I don't know, but I'll find out.
Okay. Finally, if I could see the metrics slide, I was a little confused by it. So are you, are these goals and the next slide were the actual ways that you're going to measure your success? Because I wondered how you were going to measure these so-called metrics, or that, you know, the, I thought, they should be, I mean, what, can I see the goals slide, the next one?
No, they're not linked. The, the goals are measurable goals that we included in addition to other goals for the 2023 budget. The metrics I put up there as items that we need to figure out how to get baseline data on. Again, my easy answer is I don't know how we're going to measure that. One example is Bloomington Transit Bus Ridership has done, like many businesses, and they're ramping out of their decline from the pandemic. We offer a service to provide access. We're not operating transit service. BT's operating transit service.
No, I know.
So we're trying to drive business for them.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Thank you. Other questions? And anything from our Zoom participants? If not, I have a question, or a couple. Oh, I'm sorry. Councilmember Sims?
You're fine. I think you'd want to go last. So, thank you for the report, Mr. Johnson, or Jackson.
You're welcome.
One of the things that I just, I just don't know about, maybe you can explain. What are, as part of your promo program, paper click ads? And how does that?
Well, when you do a-
Is that part of your revenue stream or anticipated revenue stream?
Well, it's part of our line item expense for marketing. We want to lean heavily on online advertising. I've used paper clicks in my previous career. And basically, when you do a search and Go Bloomington shows up, they'll be, or you, you do a search, they'll be on the right-hand side, click here for information about Go Bloomington or whatever. You only pay as an advertiser when they click on it, and that's why they call them paper clicks. So it's, it's really easy to measure the success of that approach.
And that's to promote TDM?
Yes, Go Bloomington. Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you. You said you'd visit a lot of the employers, you said, in the county, but then you said in the city for sure. Is there any thoughts of expanding that as far as your discussions with those outside of the city? And I think you, of all people, are aware of how many vehicles we have coming into the city every day. So is that part of your plan with vanpooling or carpooling or something like that?
I want to talk to whoever wants to hear about the program, and those who don't, I'm going to try and convince that they want to hear about the program, either in the city or the county. But I focused on the IU, IU Health, and Catalent to start with. Cook and on down the list are the folks that I'm going to reach out to. IU Health, IU, and Catalent, I've given formal presentations to, and I've gotten a formal, yes, we're going to embrace this. We think it's a great idea. It's a great program. We'll, we'll do cross-promotional links on each other's websites. They'll allow me to come in and promote. We'll do collateral. We'll be in their newsletters. I've done an interview with Indiana University for their, their newsletters. And I, I met with the Chamber of Commerce last week. They're working on getting me a list of all the employers, and we're just going to check them off one at a time and go promote, Go Bloomington. It's, I've had a lot of positive feedback. I haven't had any negative feedback, because, you know, this is an important program for any community, but most of these communities that have this program are large urbanized areas. So it's really forward-thinking for a community this size to have a TDM program where they're promoting single, you know, the use of other than single-occupant vehicles. And not only do we have one, we have two. Indiana University has their own TDM program as well, which Anna Dragovich is someone I've been working very closely with.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Rosenberg? Did we see your hand earlier?
Yes, thanks. I just wanted to ask, thank you so much for that presentation. In the metrics, what does it mean, what's the metric increased parking capacity?
Well, by default, if more folks drive single-occupant vehicles, don't drive SOVs, and they ride their bike, there'll be a space available. So the more folks that ride transit, all the mobility options for a better commute, the more people that use that approach versus driving themselves will by default free up parking spaces.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Other questions from councilmembers? Councilmember Smith?
Thank you. Thanks for the report, Mr. Jackson.
You're welcome.
I'm going to follow up on the metrics. That was kind of where I was going to, was, so I realize you're ramping up, and you haven't yet defined specifically the metrics. So will, will you give me an idea on a time horizon? So you will have the metrics defined so that they can be measured about when?
I'm comfortable saying by quarter, second quarter. For instance, on our software matching platform within our website, I ride my bike to work every day. My bike ride's only a mile and a half each way. But when I log my trip for my bike ride, it tells me that I- But when I log my trip for my bike ride, it tells me that I reduced carbon emissions by 25 pounds. So I rode my bike back and forth between my house three times a day. So just, and so that's one real easy measure and metric. So that will certainly be one of them.
Yeah, but on a community-wide basis, being able to measure those items, it's kind of difficult, right?
Very difficult, absolutely. And even with our matching program or our software platform, it's only as good as the data that's input. For example, I reached out to planning and asked if they knew how many automobile trips are to Bloomington. And they're really, you know, so no answer to that right now. But we've got to figure out how to try and capture as much of that data as possible.
Right, yeah.
And I don't know how today.
Yeah, and it is difficult. I realize that. I just kind of wanted to drill down a little bit.
Sure.
More and get a feel for what you, what you thought. So those are going to get developed, and maybe they'll be defined in the second quarter of the next year?
I certainly have a better answer for you than.
And those definitions will be shared with the council?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Sure.
Additional questions? Councilmember Volin?
Yeah, you just said that the app tells you that when you rode your bike, that it told you, so you rode your bike three miles and that saved 25 pounds?
Each way. Each way. 50 round trip.
Where did that data come from?
It's just part of their algorithm on their app. I mean, you can, you can do a Google search that how many pounds of CO2, if I drive my car, will be reduced by mile. So I've double-checked it because I asked the same question in my own head.
I literally did that, and I got, the first time I got was the EPA. And they said that one mile, driving one mile, the average passenger vehicle makes 404 grams, which is a little less than one pound. So it sounds like an awful, that's, I'm reading it right here. It says the average passenger vehicle emits about 404 grams of CO2 per mile. This is from EPA.gov. So like, I'm wondering where they got that data. I don't want us to be overselling the benefit to the environment if it's so easily look, I mean, I looked it up.
Well, I'll get that. I'll find out what you're looking at. I did my own research. They're the experts. I'll respond to you as to what the differences is.
And I'm happy to send you the link. The page is called Greenhouse Gas Emissions from a Typical Passenger Veal on the EPA Doc.
Easy enough.
Yeah, thank you.
Sure.
Thank you. Additional questions? If not, I have a couple. Could you put the slide up for Goals 2023 again, please? And this may seem like a pretty elementary question, but one of the goals was to register 2,500 participants in Q2 and 7,500 overall. What exactly does it mean to be a participant? Does it mean I've documented my intention to take public transit rather than drive? Or what exactly does it mean to, what counts somebody as a participant?
Our first measurable, our first call to action, when you go to our homepage at gobloomington.org, is to hit the register button. And once you register, then you can select what your origin destination and your destination is, and select whether you want transit, whether you want to register for carpools, van pools, or you want to ride campus bus, e-scooter. We have every location of every e-scooter real time and so on. So I'm sorry, I forgot your question.
So, so do we, does all, does someone registering count them as a participant? Or do they have to actually engage in those behaviors to be a participant?
Well, participant, it means you registered. That doesn't mean that you are actively logging trips.
Okay, okay. And my second question, secure federal funding with no less than 50/50 federal to local match. How much money are we talking about? Somewhere between $1,000 and $10 million, I'm guessing.
2022 budget for Go Bloomington is $216,000. The TDM plan that was prepared by the outside consultant suggested that it should be $487,000 a year. And I'm not sure where we're going to end up. Certainly hoping through the budget process that the funds allocated for 2023 are higher than 2022, but not as high as the plan calls for. But right now, we get $75,000 a year in ARPA funding. That's going to sunset. Ideally, at a minimum, we replace that with these FHWA carbon reduction formula funds that the MPO allocates.
And are there other entities that are prospective match sources or?
Other funding sources?
Yeah.
Possibly. The neat thing about this carbon reduction money is it's brand-new funding type in the infrastructure bill, and it specifically calls out TDMs. As you can imagine, I'm not speaking about our MPO because I haven't spoke to our MPO Policy Committee yet, but I've worked with many MPOs around this country, and they get very protective of their existing funding pie. And I would suggest this funding pie is growing. Having said that, the Bloomington Transit is the Federal Transit Administrator, Federal Transit Administration designated recipient of funds. So if we were to pursue Federal Transit Administration funds, we have to go through them and have them sponsor the grant. And I've met with John Connell on many occasions. We meet every other week, and he's willing to do that. And at some point, we might buy vans versus contract with enterprise for vans. And if that is an example, we would use federal capital dollars to do that, and those would be under his purview. But there's formula funds that he has available to him, and there's a lot of discretionary grants. I mean, there's a lot of grant opportunities.
Good. Glad to hear we're aggressively pursuing those. So, thank you. Are there any other questions? Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Jackson, thank you so much for being with us. We look forward to hearing more.
Pleasure meeting you.
So are there any reports from council committees this evening? Seeing none, we'll go into our first period of public comment. There's a total of 20 minutes set aside for this section. Can we get a sense of how many people plan to offer public comment? Four, five, six. And Mr. Lucas, could you do the?
Yes. If there are any members of the public watching on Zoom that would like to offer comment tonight on items not on the agenda, please indicate your desire to speak by using the raise hand feature, which you can find in your control bar under the reactions tab or the more tab. And if you aren't able to locate that raise hand button, please send a chat to the meeting host to let us know you'd like to speak. And I don't see any hands shooting up right this second on Zoom.
I counted six or seven, somewhere. Six, okay. Let's plan on three minutes each, and if we need to extend the time, we can deal with that when we get to hit the 20-minute mark. So with that, if you would, please approach the podium. And if you would, share your name for the record. And then you will have three minutes. You'll see a timer to help you keep track of your comments, so.
Daryl Rubel. I'm not a happy guy today. I'm really pissed. 62, retired in October. My daughter was pregnant in October, had her baby in June, lasted June, first July. Baby Sarah. My daughter loved her sister that passed away in April of '21. Loved her sister so well, loved her dearly, that she named her baby after her sister, Baby Sarah. Today, my granddaughter, Baby Sarah, that I loved dearly because it's a reincarnation of my daughter that passed away. And DCS come by today and kidnapped my baby Sarah. My soul is hurting right now bad. Then that DCS has totally tortured my two daughters for the last 10 years. I've suffered with both my daughters the whole time. And now I'm just, I'll tell you what, man, I am, I am so, I am so tore. I had to come here. I ain't got nobody at home. All I have is my, I've got a cat or two. They don't get to talk to me, but boy, they give me some love. But I had to come here. Please, people, we've got to go in and clean that place out, out here on Curry Pike. I was out there this morning. I took the baby out there to show them that the baby was okay. That wasn't good enough for them. And I had plans, I'd done been to court, to file for paternity or for guardianship because my daughter has a drug problem, so does her husband. That's what this culminated from. I don't get to do that. DCS told me today, well, the judge will make a decision. And we had a Zoom thing about 3:00. I'm screwed. I don't get my baby. I don't get the chance. And you know what, people? When you're a grandfather in Indiana and you have troubles with your children, like I've had with the grandbabies and stuff, you have no rights as a grandparent. They treated me like crap at DCS today. Becca, Kimmel, Elijah, they treated me like shit. Didn't give a damn about my feelings, took my only, my last. I've got 16 grandchildren. That's all I'm going to get. That's all there. Laura got fixed. I can't have no more. And I've lost this one. But I wanted to get guardianship. DCS said, fuck you! Excuse my language. But anyway, I'm mad, furious. DCS needs to be audited out here on Curry Pike. Someone needs to go out there. These people are heartless. They showed me no compassion.
Mr. Rubel, that's your three minutes. You've used your three minutes.
Okay. They showed me no compassion at all. I hate them people.
Just finishing up your comments.
And if I win a million dollars, I'm going to go get the big lawyer. I'm going to take all their jobs.
Please finish up your comments.
I'd like to buy some LS6 Chevilles and build me a garage full of them, but I'm going to take my money. I'm going to fight them demons out there.
Mr. Rubel, your time is up.
DCS, here you go.
Mr. Rubel?
Fuck you.
Welcome.
Hi. I'm Mark Hagerty.
Mr. Hagerty, you'll have three minutes. Welcome.
Thank you, whoever fixed the rims at Switchyard Park. It's been four, four, five months, and we really appreciate it. People are playing ball at the moment. Somebody also put up pads on those goal standards. And I'm just thrilled that such a thing could happen. Now, if we could get lights on that basketball goal, like the rest of the town has on the skateboard park, the wiffle board, or whatever they call that ping-pong thing over there, the tennis courts, the baseball diamonds, if we could have lights so that we could play as it gets darker in the fall, we play later in the evening, that would complete that particular court as a place to come and play, an integrated place. The other most integrated place in Bloomington is the skateboard park. It has, and it's mostly integrated not through race but through class. There's rich kids and poor kids, kids of all ages down there. But at 11:00 on Friday and Saturday night, those kids are forced out of there by whatever rule that's been made. And I'm trying to prevent these kids from hitting the alcohol bar circuit downtown with all of its problems that I see in the jail. Alcohol being the only drug that's worse than fentanyl right now for landing people in jail and causing people problems. These young athletes that are struggling with their skateboard skills, that are down there every night encouraging each other until they get thrown out, they deserve, and the youth of Bloomington deserves. If you're not from IU, you don't realize what a desert this is for teenagers, especially male teenagers. And if you don't work in the jail, if you haven't spent much time in the jail, you don't understand how all this affects families. So what I would like is lights up on the basketball court and stop closing the bathrooms at 8:00 at night so that the homeless have to poop in the bushes. And open up, especially on the weekends when that alcohol scene is going on, open up the park, or at least the skateboard part of it and the basketball part of it, so that the youth can have some alternative to this toxic environment that we've created downtown. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hagerty. Who do we have next? Mr. Lucas, are you seeing anyone on Zoom? Okay, thank you. Welcome. Please share your name for the record, and you'll have three minutes.
I don't have a pen. My name is Stephen French. I'd like to thank the board for all you do for Bloomington. Myself, I'm a city employee at the Department of Sanitation. Two weeks ago, I brought up some information on some numbers of the past contract raises, or I guess lack of, I should say. So currently, I like to bring up the personnel, how many we are down from this lack of pay scale, not only from the pay scale, probably I'm sure people just want to retire, move on to something else. But as a utilities personnel here in the city of Bloomington, we're down 23% of employees. For fleet, there is fully staffed at seven, but understaffed. At 700-plus vehicles, they have seven mechanics to fix all these vehicles in the city of Bloomington. Sanitation, my department, we are down 18%. We only have 21 people. 18% of 21 is a lot. Street department, as of last, well, as of this morning, they were down 28%. They had three put in their, they were leaving today, or they put their two weeks' notice in. So I had three today, averaging, average, what, 32, 33% now, below full capacity. The parks, I'm guessing we kind of talk a little bit, down 11%. And that's, you know, for the whole of the city, that's a lot. And we're going to keep losing them. The pay is nowhere near where it needs to be. The county's in an average right now of 5 to 9.5% raise. That's where we need to be. And on my part, I would just like the city to know that I myself cut my family funeral short for a meeting today that I got canceled last minute. So if I have to give my time for the city to talk with them, they should show the respect to give me their time and not cancel it last minute. And myself and a few others, we don't mean to cut out. We have to be up at 3:00 AM to pick your sanitation and recycling up, so we'll be leaving early. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. French. Welcome. Please share your name for the record, and then you'll have three minutes.
My name is Brad, pardon me. Good evening. My name is Bradley Rushton. City council members, I am the current serving president for ASME 2487. I am here this evening to speak on behalf of the many employees serving the city of Bloomington. I am here to respectfully request that the city council consider postponing budget approval until the city administration has had the opportunity to complete the negotiations that was started between the city and ASME. As of to date, the two previous scheduled meetings were canceled by the administration. When we were able to have a discussion with the city representatives, it was conveyed that they wanted to wait until after budget hearings were concluded so they could get to the real negotiations. This comes after months of ongoing negotiations attempting to reach an agreement prior to the budget hearings so an informed recommendation could be made. We attempted to explain that while we are willing to work with the city to conclude the contract negotiations, we have done this very practice before in previous contracts, only to be told the budget has already been approved and there is no money allocated towards us, to which the union members were once again left behind when it came to the, to a fair cost of living increase. While we were assured that this is not the case at this time, history has proven otherwise. This intentional delay will place the union members in a compromising position. We would, in essence, be forced to accept whatever proposal they deem us worthy of. Since the budget will already be approved, that is not real negotiations. We, the members of ASME, are willing and eager to bring about a conclusion to the contract negotiations, provided we can get the administration to sit down with us. So in conclusion, we, the employees of Bloomington, would like to thank all the city council members for their support and attention in this endeavor to bring about a meaningful and fair conclusion to the ongoing negotiations with ASME and the city administration. If you have any questions, we are at your service. Thank you.
Thank you. Who do we have next? Welcome. If you would, share your name for the record.
Thank you.
Thank you. Who do we have next? Welcome. If you would, share your name for the record, please, and then you'll have three minutes.
Yes, thank you, Council President, Vice President Scambalory. My name is David Wolf Bender, Director of City Relations, Indiana University Student Government. I just want to share a few things that might be of interest to the city at large, in case you haven't left your house in a week or so. IU classes are about to begin on Monday, August 22nd, and I think I speak for all of us at IUSG when I say that we're excited to see Kirkwood in our campus full of students again. Bloomington summers are gorgeous, but they're also lonely and fairly empty, so it'll be great to see students return our city to its full population of 80,000. Excuse me. I do want to just say one thing about, one priority of ours at IUSG this semester in particular, but this year as a whole. We are making it a priority for us to focus on voter registration and student engagement at all levels of government, but particularly local government. We have just reaffirmed our support for this and we're already starting a campaign to ask IU students three questions. The first question is, have you changed addresses since last year? The second question is, are you a new IU student? And the third question is, are you not registered to vote? And if you answered yes to any of those questions as an IU student or as a Bloomington resident, you need to re-register, update your voter registration, or register altogether. And we are trying to make it as easy as possible for IU students and Bloomington residents to do just that. If you go to IU.turbovote.org, that's I-U dot T-U-R-B-O-V-O-T-E dot org, you can find an easy way to register to vote, check your voter registration, or update your voter registration. And of course, before that we, the voter registration deadline is in October for the November elections, and if you register to vote for this November, it means you'll automatically be registered for the election, the municipal primary election that will follow in May. Thank you so much, and I really appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Bender. Welcome. Please share your name for the record and then you'll have three minutes.
John Deckard. I'm an operator with Utilities Department, currently on my seventh year of employment here. I came here after a death in my family prompted me to have more home time. And while I'm appreciative that the city has afforded me time, I have my 12-year-old daughter Charlie here. I missed the first five years of her life because I, I, I worked. I was gone, you know, dark to dark six days a week. And while this place afforded me time off and great benefits for my family, a lot of people are throwing around some percentages here. I just try to talk the truth. The reality of it is, I'm having to choose to look for employment that takes care of my family because the pay here has become stagnant. That's just the reality of it. I don't want to give up the benefits of time off here afforded by the city, but it's just a decision, a hard decision, that I'm to the point of making. A lot of people that I work with are leaving. Good friends of mine have left for neighboring utility companies where they got substantial raises because what we do is valued outside of the city. While a few people have reached out and made comments that they appreciate what we do, the reality of it is, I am a civil servant. And I will be honest with you, the treatment I get out in the general public, a lot of anger that people have directed towards the city unfortunately falls in those they, they interact with. People that they would like to talk to maybe aren't, they're not able to contact. Unfortunately, you know, I lend an ear to a lot of people and their hardships and frustrations, and the reality of it is, our work is looked down upon. I understand that it's a necessary evil, you know, a city this size. You know, as mentioned, IU's back in session, you know, that makes Bloomington what it is. It really does. All the restaurants, you know, the scene, the beautiful summer evenings, the reality of it is, that taxes our system. There's a lot of, you know, water rates, the usage is going up, sanitation, the plants are burdened, you know, with processing all this. That all falls on to the utility workers, sanitation, street department. And I feel like those people do a good job of keeping things going. I know during the wintertime, there's a lot of praise. During snow season, everybody loves street department coming, you know, when the snowplows are out, because if you can't get out of home, you can't enjoy the city and all it has to offer. And, you know, it'd be nice to just have a decent living wage is the reality of it. We're not asking for a lot. It just be comparable to other departments that are pulling away employees that bring a lot to utilities. You know, people are retiring and unfortunately, we're losing that experience. A lot of the new higher ends are young because they're yet to see the reality of you can't raise a family on these wages. So unfortunately, we've lost a lot of that experience and we're not retaining those people, so, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Deckard. Additional public comment? Hi, welcome. Please share your name for the record and then you'll have three minutes.
My name's Steve Robertson. I work for the city, going on 29 years. And I know that Rollo and Smith said you was gonna look at the budget for the wages and the percentages of the employees. Just keep in mind that when you look at those numbers, you're seeing them before we are. Because when the negotiation's not at a halt, we have no idea. So, look at it from, with our eyes and see if you think we can live on what they're gonna bring across for us. A lot of our employees here, this is their future. And a lot of them are happy here, but if the wages don't come through, they're gonna have to leave. And they're sitting right now waiting on this negotiation to come through to see if it's feasible for them to still work for the city of Bloomington. And that's experience that you guys don't want to lose. I can tell you that right now, because if you bring in people, do you want to trust somebody else that don't know anything about your water that you drink? Just bring somebody off the street, put them in a position, and then you go drink that water? You want to lose that experience? I don't think so. I think you want to keep their experience. And you need to pay the employees that's got that experience. So I'm asking the board that, since our negotiations have come to a standstill and we have no idea what is there, you will see it long before we will. And I feel like that, once it's been to the budget and the budget's been approved, when it comes back to our table, there's no negotiations. Negotiations, I don't know how you would call that negotiations. Because you already got your mindset, what you're gonna give us. What is there to negotiate? Might as well just say, "Well, we're gonna bring it to the table and this is what it is. Take it or leave it." That's all I got to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Robertson. Mr. Lucas, are we seeing anyone on Zoom?
No, I don't believe so.
Okay. Is there any additional public comment here in chambers? Please, go ahead. Please share your name for the record and then you'll have three minutes.
Hi, my name's Alan Johnson. I work for the street department of Bloomington. I've worked here eight years as of December. See, we do anything from traffic lights to any city trees to concrete, maintain the roads, and we do obviously the snow plowing, which, like you said, everybody loves that. Since I've been there, as of December, in eight years, I've seen 29 people leave our department, whether it's firing, quitting for better jobs, retiring, and we had two deaths. This week, we've lost three people. Two of them has given their, two week, they're leaving, found better jobs. One is transferring to a non-union job. So that puts us at 32 people in my eight years of here. You know how many people we have in that department? 34, including my bosses. That's how much turnover rate we have. And mainly is because the pay, you can go do the operating jobs at different places and make a lot more money. As for the negotiation, we don't know what we're getting because they will not talk to the union. Winter's coming. Like I said, we lost three this week. Two of them's leaving in two weeks and the other one's turning his papers in. We're gonna get to the point that when leaves are falling, we don't have people to pick stuff up. When snow's falling, we will, are gonna be undermanned. And that affects every taxpayer out there at this point. It's hurting not only you guys, but it's hurting our families, like he stated. He's thinking about looking for a different job to take care of his family. It's not just the negotiations for us, it's for our families. And that's all I got to say. I wanted, do want to thank all you guys from every Ask Me employee that the city has. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Additional comment? Okay, thank you. Seeing none. Let's come back to council for appointments to boards and commissions. Are there any this evening?
Apologies, I do locate those. I would like to move that we appoint Jordan Porter Mesh to seat C1, Michael Ross to seat C3, John Shearer to seat C4, and Emily Alfred to seat C7 of the Community Advisory and Public Safety Commission.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Okay. We need to do a roll call vote this evening, so will our deputy clerk stall? Please call the roll. Councilmember Sims?
Yes.
Scambalory?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Yes.
Volan?
Yes.
And Sims. And that is 9-0-0. Thank you. Are there additional appointments?
One moment, please.
Oh. Did I get you, Councilmember Sims?
So sorry.
I did. Sorry. Thank you.
Yes, 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 yes.
So it's now 11. Does it, no, I'm kidding. So, um, thank you. Are there additional Councilmember Flaherty?
I would like to move that we appoint Elizabeth McClery to seat C4 and Connor Wright to seat C6 of the Environmental Quality and Conservation Commission.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Okay. Seeing none, will the clerk, will the deputy clerk please call the roll? Yes. Councilmember Scambalory?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Yes.
Volan?
Yes.
And Sims.
Yes.
And those appointments are made 9-0-0. Are there any additional appointments? Councilmember Flaherty?
Yes, I'd like to move we appoint Daniella Malochi to seat C1 of the Traffic Commission.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the deputy clerk call the roll, please? Councilmember Sandberg?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Yes.
Volan?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Scambalory?
Yes.
And that passes 9-0-0. Are there additional appointments? Okay. Seeing none. Thank you. And, and thank you to all those who have accepted appointment on boards and commissions. We're grateful for your service. Okay. With that, we're gonna move to legislation for second readings and resolutions.
Madam Chair, I move that ordinance 2221 be introduced and read by the deputy clerk by title and synopsis only.
Will the deputy clerk please call the roll on the motion to introduce? Sorry. Councilmember Rallo?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Yes.
Volan?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Scambalory?
Yes.
And Sandberg?
Yes.
And that's 9-0. Will the clerk please read, or deputy clerk please read? Ordinance 2221 to amend Title 8 of the Bloomington Municipal Code entitled Historic Preservation and Protection to establish a historic district regarding Bethel AME Church and Parsonage. Bethel AME owner and petitioner. The synopsis is, this ordinance amends Chapter 8.20 of the Bloomington Municipal Code entitled The List of Designated Historic Districts in order to designate the Bethel AME Church and Parsonage as a historic district. The owner and petitioner, Bethel AME, sought this action and the Bloomington Historic Preservation Commission, after a public hearing on July 14, 2022, recommended that the structure be designated historic with a rating as outstanding. This rating was based upon certain historic and architectural criteria set forth in Bloomington Municipal Code 8.08.101E entitled Historic District Criteria. Local designation will provide the protection needed to ensure that this property is preserved. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I move that ordinance 2221 be adopted. Second.
Thank you. And with that, I believe we have Ms. Colenbrany with us.
Good evening, councilmembers. Can you hear me? Excellent. I'm going to share my presentation. Can you hear me?
Yeah, that's fine. Thank you.
Good, excellent. So tonight, I am presenting the nomination for the Bethel African Methodist Episcopal Church and Parsonage located at 302 and 308 North Rogers Street, right across the corner. This petition was brought by the Bethel AME Congregation. I do want to state that both Commissioner Elizabeth Mitchell and myself have been in conversation with them for the previous month, so some of the representatives are here. Staff recommends the property to be, Bethel AME Church and Parsonage to be designated as a local historic district. After careful consideration of the application and review of the historic district criteria found in ordinance 9520 of the Municipal Code, staff and the Historic Preservation Commission found that the property not only meets but exceeds the minimum criteria listed in the code. In fact, it almost, it almost meets almost all of them. So, criteria 1A. And last week, I did read through the criteria, and I would like to do that again because criteria 1A doesn't really say a lot. So, let me see if I can find it here. Criteria 1A meet, means that the property has significant character, interest, or value as part of the development, heritage, or cultural characteristics of the city, state, or nation, or is associated with a person who played a significant role in local, state, or national history. The property meets criteria 1A because the church provided a safe communal space for many members of Bloomington's black community in the early 20th century, and I would argue that they continue that mission to this day. Prominent members such as Mrs. Mattie Jacobs Fuller raised a considerable amount of money to make sure that the congregation owned the land and the building. The criteria meets, sorry, the property meets criteria 1C, and 1C means that it exemplifies the cultural, political, economic, or social, social or historic heritage of the community because it has served as one of the main social, cultural hubs of Bloomington's black community, as a social hub for congregants and Indiana University students alike. The property meets criteria 2B, which means that it is the work of a designer whose individual work has significantly influenced the development of the community because this is an exemplary work by John L. Nichols, perhaps Bloomington's earliest architect of renown's, of renown's work. The property meets criteria 2G, which means that it exemplifies the built environment in an era of history characterized by distinctive architectural style because the building itself, through its elegant design, provides a solid example of the late Classical Revival style. It is a very unique building made in, built with limestone, donated from local quarries. It has a series of stained glass windows, and it has been kept in pristine condition. This is the loc- condition. This is the location of the church and the parsonage. I haven't mentioned the parsonage itself, but the parsonage is a contributing structure, a cottage, a 1925 cottage, that has been carefully kept and restored by the community. I wanted to show you the Sandborne map. This is actually supposed to be 1933, not, um, not, no, sorry, 1883. Sorry for the misspelling. 1883 of the location of the Bethel AME on Sixth Street. So, the congregation itself is, was established in Bloomington in 1870. They originally didn't have their own building, so they purchased a, an existing Presbyterian church. And I really like this photo because you can see the steeple at the very, very end. It's the only photo that I could find of this original structure. In the early 20th century, the congregation decided that they wanted to build their own building and own the property and have this space for themselves that was created specifically for the community. This is a photo of the congregation standing in front of the building. I put a question mark after 1945. That's the date I found for it, but wasn't able to verify. Mattie Jacobs Fuller is an incredibly important historical figure for Bloomington in general. She was an acclaimed singer and organ player. She was a prominent member of the community who helped raise money to buy the land where the current church is located with her musical performances. She was also born into chattel slavery, came to Bloomington when she was four years old, and although I could not find a sample of her singing voice, she did do an interview for the WPA in the 1930s of, that was done as a project to rescue the voices of people who survived that terrible time in history. She was also a businessperson. She raised $13,000 in money back then, the equivalent of $200,000 today, or almost 190-something, just through her public performances. And I believe that one of the roads was, there was a conversation about naming a street or a road after her because she has been such an impactful and needs to be recognized more. The organs still exist within the church. This is an image of the interior of the church the day that the mortgage was burnt. So, the Bethel AME congregation did a lot of events and activities. They did a lot of potlucks, and they communicated a lot with the Second Baptist Church across the street to make sure that the, in the early 19-teens, there were sometimes eight African-American students in all of Indiana University, and these churches would take turns. Bethel AME would usually host the students to give them a place to have dinner, to feel welcome, to have family. So, this went, this was a social service that enveloped as much of the community as possible. The community also made sure that through potlucks, plays, and many different events, they were able to raise the money. So, it was not just Mattie, Mrs. Mattie Fuller, but the entire community made a huge effort to be able to not owe anybody any money on that land. So, yeah, in 1945, they burned the mortgage and took pictures. These are images of the church as it is now. Just showing you some of the different sides of the church and the parsonage, which is a cottage from 1925. It was restored about 10, 12 years ago with a lot of community effort because it was in disrepair. So, with that, I conclude my presentation. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Would the petitioners like to speak and add to the story? Ms. Colombranya, you said it all. Thank you. What a remarkable story. With that, but with that, let's come to council. Are there questions? Councilmember Volin?
Yeah, I guess the only question I have is, why did it take so long?
That's, that's actually an excellent que, and an important question because we have many hidden gems throughout Bloomington that people assume are already part of our landmark list. But in order to be a landmark, there are two, or, or as we call them here, a historic district, there are two main paths. The first path is for the owners to petition to become a landmark. The other one is through the demolition delay process when a building is brought up for this final last-minute elevate or demolish sort of binary decision that the Historic Preservation Commission makes. So, unfortunately, at this point, we don't go and scour the land and bring all these buildings to come and counsel and have them all designated. But people do come and approach us and, and get them on the list.
Thank you. I just, I would love to ask the, some of the petitioners who are here, is it just that you weren't aware that it could be done, or was there, what you, we'd like to hear you talk about it, yeah?
And if you would, share your name for the record, please?
Hi, good evening. My name is Elizabeth Mitchell, and I'm historian for Monroe County on African-American experience and culture for Bloomington. I just decided that there are, we're forgetting about the West Side and several locations that need to be included in, in the history and saved. And this is just the beginning for me, a personal journey to make sure that we don't forget African-American sites. This is just one of them, and there are several locations that the city of Bloomington needs to recognize and save. So, we're just starting with Bethel. It should have been recognized years ago. I mean, come on, it's been here since 1870. And Mattie, being a slave, coming here, we've forgotten, or I haven't forgotten, but I want to make sure the city recognize, here's someone who was born into slavery, came to Bloomington, and she was the richest black woman in Bloomington. And so, we need to recognize that history and the rich history that African-Americans have contributed to Bloomington. And, and just to recognize this rich history and to be proud of that history. And so, she's just a small kernel of that history. And, and, you know, if we can recognize Madame CJ Walker in Indianapolis, well, we've got our own Madame CJ Walker and Marion Anderson in Madame, Madame, Mattie Walker, and, I'm sorry, in Mattie Fuller. And so, this is just a small part of that, and to recognize her and Bethel AME, that's a crown jewel of a church and Second Baptist. So, this is just a little bit what we can do to make sure that we save that building and that long after we're gone, it's still here on that corner.
I'm glad that you discovered this path. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Rallo?
Yeah, I've got a question. It's a shame that Ms. Fuller's, you know, singing wasn't recorded that we know of, at least, maybe somewhere. But Ms. Colombranya talked about an interview. How do we find that interview? You said it was done with the WPA?
The Monroe County History Center. We'll tell you all about...
They're in possession of it?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
And then we have, I'm part of Resilience Productions, and we've done plays about Mattie. We portrayed her for Monroe County's bicentennial, right at the Courthouse Square, and that's where she played every weekend gospel music and played her organ, which is still inside that church. And $13,000 back in the 1800s was a lot of money. And any money that she made singing gospel songs and playing her organ, she gave all of it to her church. She was very popular, not only in Bloomington, but also in Martinsville area. She was asked to come up there quite often, every summer, to play music and sing.
Wonderful. I had one other question.
Please.
Ms. Colombranya talked about donations of limestone from a local quarry. Did a, did a local quarry support the church in that way to donate, or was the, or were you saying that it was, or was it purchased, the limestone? You said donated, I think.
Well, she went to an area called Bethany Park up there in, near Martinsville, and they paid for her to come up to sing, and all of that money she donated to build Bethel.
Okay.
And then she sang on the Courthouse Square here in Bloomington every weekend. She was in demand. The Showers family loved her. She was very popular. Like I said, she was the wealthiest black woman in Bloomington.
Remarkable. Thank you. Did I get that right, Ms. Colombranya, or did, that it was, that she was donating is what you meant to say, or was it, or did I misinterpret, or was there a local quarry that you said donated limestone?
Ah. Yeah, go ahead.
I'm just curious about that.
Hi. According to the sources I read, and these are, remind you, these are secondary sources, they said quarries, so that there were donations from quarries around Bloomington in order to make sure that the church was built.
Good.
Yeah, I think Hortley, Hortley Quarry.
Okay. Thank, thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Remarkable story. So, additional questions from council? If not, let's go to public comment. Yes, welcome. If you would, please share your name for the record, and then you'll have three minutes.
Good evening. My name's Karen Duffy, and I live in the Near West Side Conservation District, the eastern border of which is right across the street from the Bethel AME Church and Parsonage. And I'm here tonight to express my wholehearted support for this historic designation of this wonderful property. It's beautifully detailed in the nomination, I think. The building's historic, cultural, and architectural significance, clear and convincing. And indeed, a more deserving property is hard to imagine, I think, and I, I don't imagine there'll be any controversy about this, but in fact, I, I hope that, that there's a shared excitement for this long overdue motion. And finally, I, I want, because I know these nominations are a lot of work, and I want, as someone who has worked on the nomination in the past, I want to thank the Bethel congregation, the hand staff, and the HPC for bringing this important nomination to council to secure formal public recognition and the protections that brings to a property that's truly one of the jewels of our city. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Duffy. Additional public comment. Welcome. If you would, share your name for the record, please, and then you'll have three minutes.
Good evening. My name is Nicole Bolden, and I think there's a certain irony in stating my name for the record. I think I'll be writing it up later. So, so I wanted to say I fully support the designation, and I was really grateful that you had questions for Ms. Mitchell. So, thank you, because I think the importance of history cannot be overstated here, not just in designating the property, but in talking about it this evening. She spoke about this designation a couple of times before this body, but it wasn't captured in minutes. And Ms. Colombranya spoke about it in a couple of different opportunities, but I think it is important for the city that we actually have as much of a record of the actions that this body takes. And so, I appreciate the fact that you took the time this evening to ask questions and get as full a picture of what we are doing this evening. So, I thank you all for asking the questions. I'm thankful to Ms. Mitchell for actually coming up and answering them. Thank you, Ms. Colombranya, for giving another presentation. And that was what I wanted to say. Second Bapt, or not Second Baptist, Bethel AME and Second Baptist have been a big part of my life in Bloomington. And even this evening, when I was at another event, they were talking about those churches and how important they have been to the black community here. And they reminded the students who are just coming into Bloomington how they are part of the community and how they can go to those churches and find community here. And they're not alone. So, thank you for making sure that we will always have a place here. That was all.
Thank you, Ms. Bolden. Additional public comment? Okay, seeing none, or, I'm sorry, Mr. Lucas?
I apologize for the, a couple of hands raised on Zoom, and if there are other, other attendees on Zoom that would like to offer public comment on this item, please use the raise hand feature to indicate your desire to speak. And first up, I believe we have Renee Miller.
Thank you. Welcome, Ms. Miller. You'll have three minutes. Please go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you, council, for allowing me to speak this evening, and thank you...
Ms. Miller, we may be having a little trouble hearing you. Am I the only one who's having trouble? Perhaps you could check your audio?
Can you hear me?
It's, it's very faint. I don't know if, if you could maybe get closer to your microphone.
I can sure try. Is this better?
That's better. Thank you. Please go ahead.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you, Ms. Mitchell, for sharing such a rich, rich history. I appreciate you answering the questions that were poised to you, and I fully and wholly, wholeheartedly support the designation, and I hope that everyone else does as well. And I just wanted to be on the record to say that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. Mr. Lucas, we have another speaker, or another speaker, I believe?
Yes, next is Natalia Galvin.
Ms. Galvin, welcome. You'll have three minutes. Please go ahead.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, great. Okay. Hello, my name is Natalia Galvin, and I'm a Near West Side resident and serve on the Near West Side Neighborhood Association with Karen Duffy, who just spoke. I only mention that because I regret that we haven't met recently to give a formal endorsement. We're having a picnic this weekend, but we haven't really met this summer. But I wholeheartedly support this effort, and I am so grateful for everything Bethel AME does for our community and for its rich history. And I want to also thank Ms. Mitchell for educating me tonight because I was unaware of most of that. I just know them as an amazing neighbor that I'm fortunate to have on the Near West Side. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Galvin. Mr. Lucas, additional commenters?
That is all I see on Zoom at the moment.
Okay. And is there anyone else here in chambers? Welcome. If you would, share your name for the record, and then you'll have three minutes.
My name, my name is Betty Lewis, and I am a member of Bethel AME Church. I wear a lot of different hats there. And due to COVID, we've been struggling, but we have continued to have service, have fellowship. We've also have two new members, and not only African-Americans are welcomed at our church, but all nationalities. So, come and visit us, come and join us. And I am a very proud person to be a part of Bethel AME Church.
That's it.
Thank you, Ms. Lewis. Additional comment, either here in chambers or on Zoom? Okay, seeing none. Let's come back to council for final comments or additional questions if there are any. Councilmember Smith?
I just want to make a comment.
Please.
What a great thing that, that this is getting done. And it's wonderful that Bethel AME is recognized and in, in the record as historical property, and it's wonderful. And thank you for coming and telling us about it again. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Flaherty?
Yes, likewise, wanted to say thank you for sharing that story this evening. I'm glad it will be reflected in the public record and meeting minutes, and happy to support the petition, of course, and, and learn about that tonight. And thank you also for all the work that went into it from both the petitioner and staff.
Thank you. Councilmember Sims?
Thank you. At committee meeting last week, I mentioned my upbringing, which was in AME. And again, for the record, I just wanted to understand that AME stands for African Methodist Episcopal. And I think that's important as well for the records. So Bethel AME. On last week, I talked about that's how I was raised, AME, even though I am now a member of Bethel A, I'm sorry, of Second Baptist Church. And have been a president of Board of Trustees of Second Baptist and doing all those things. But I think what's important is, first of all, thanks, Ms. Colombrania, for the report and all the work that you and the staff have done. I want to thank our community members for your voices and your diligence and working toward this. Ms. Liz Mitchell happens to be my neighbor, lives right across the street. So some of the things that you guys just hear, sometimes I hear every Sunday with some lemonade or something. But I listen, because I think that's important, if I didn't know it in the first place. There's also, and my final comment, there's been a lot of activity, discussion, things having to do with DEI, diversity, equity, and inclusion. And I think one of the most important things of legislation such as this is the knowledge that you learn. In some of our training, and I've mentioned other folks, that DEI, in and of itself, means very little to me if it's not internalized and it changes you from the inside, because you have a different understanding of what equity means and what being included means. Ms. Lewis stated that, yeah, it's a black church, but everybody's welcome. See, we've been inclusive forever. We're just trying to share that out. But I think that's what's important, and it's hard to internalize just what you hear, but it's easier to internalize that knowledge. So if you hear the story of how it's built and what Ms. Mattie Fuller did, that's knowledge, and that's something you can internalize, and you can almost have empathy on how it got to where we are. And I think that's what's very, very important. So I just want to thank everyone for their input. I look forward to, and Liz has mentioned some of the other things, so I won't spoil her parade, but there's other things that they're working on as a group to bring before this body. But I'm very happy, like I said last week, to support this ordinance and look forward to many more things from our fellow congregants from down the street. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Volin?
About 10 years or so ago, there was, we had a frequency, well, we used to call them frequent flyers, people who would come to public comment at the podium, and they were, like a certain gentleman who spoke tonight, very angry, very disruptive, and they were regulars, and they'd come every, every regular session. And one night, all three of our most frequent flyers showed up on the same night, were very disruptive. One of my colleagues thought that it might be a good idea to limit public comment. And we managed to, some behind the scenes persuaded some people to come to the next meeting and to talk about anything. Anything, because anything that they had to share would be better than what these frequent flyers were talking about. And we reversed that, that idea that maybe we should get rid of public comment. But the fact is that not enough people come and share their wisdom with us at that podium. Many people think that they can't, or they're somehow not worthy, they don't know enough. There are many people with more knowledge and insight who just rarely use this podium to, for the higher purposes that they are capable of invoking. I think that the biggest reason that this church wasn't declared historic years ago simply because the congregation wasn't aware that such a designation existed and could be pursued relatively straightforwardly. That oversight, that lack of awareness, is the whole city's problem to solve. If there is history to be preserved, it's up to the entire community to pursue it, not just to approve it. So I want to encourage local historians like Ms. Mitchell to come to any regular session of council and share any knowledge that they have. As you can see from tonight, one of our speakers, they have, most people have a lot more useful things to say. But I also want to encourage anyone in this room to share the knowledge that if you know of a building that deserves historic preservation, that it can provide benefits to the building, the owner, and the community, just like we're seeing tonight. So I want to thank the congregation of Bethel AME Church for bringing this forward. I want to thank Ms. Colombrania for making it possible, and I hope my colleagues will join me in approving this historic designation. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go to our colleagues on Zoom. Councilmember Piedmont Smith and Councilmember Sandberg?
Yes, thank you so much. I add my thanks to the congregation of the Bethel AME Church, to historian Liz Mitchell, and to Gloria Colombrania for all their efforts. I, I think, was one of several people who thought that the Bethel AME Church was already historically protected. So I'm glad that this has come forward, and I know that it does take work, and I really appreciate the work that went into it. I'm also glad that the parsonage is included, because I think that is part of the fabric of the Near West Side neighborhood and that area, as well as the very impressive stone building that is the church itself. And it was fascinating to learn about Mattie Jacobs Fuller, who, you know, I mean, this is amazing to think about how much money she earned just from her musical performances, almost $200,000, and her dedication to the church is very impressive. So it's always great to learn about strong women in our history, especially women of color. And so I'm very pleased that this was brought to the public attention, and I think Elizabeth Mitchell is in that category as well, and we owe her a debt of gratitude for shining light on the history of our black community in Bloomington. So I'm very pleased to be able to vote in favor tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. And Councilmember Sandberg?
Thank you. It has certainly been a pleasure to get acquainted with this issue from the very first time it was brought to us in a work session and through last week's discussion. I think the more presentations we can do to bring awareness to the public, the better. I particularly want to thank Liz Mitchell for her passion and her dedication to history as a commissioner and also as one leading the charge for this particular designation. Our history is vitally important. Our protection of our significant buildings is significant, particularly the ones that house activity that are so beneficial to the community and the residents who live here and have been for decades. So again, Ms. Mitchell, I have heard from many friends who have been on your tours and have spoken highly of them and your knowledge, and we are just grateful that you have had the opportunity over these many weeks. And now, of course, much has been made about the fact that this is the record. Of course, minutes are taken at this meeting. This is a regular session. When votes are taken, I'm very thrilled to be able to vote yes on this designation. But I also feel that our city's history can be discussed in many forums, and I hope they will continue in the future. And it's great to know that our own History Center here in Monroe County may be housing much of the history that we do not know about and we have not heard about until good people like our commissioners and Liz Mitchell and the congregants of Bethel AME come forward and ask for these protections that we are happy to offer. Thanks to all.
Thank you. And let's come back to council chambers. Councilmember Rallo?
Thank you. Well, this is a happy moment to do this, and I, I think what struck me is that about Mattie Jacobs Fuller is not only how diligent she was and committed to raise the funds for the African American community, but did so at a time where Indiana had a very shameful history. And that can't be forgotten either. And I'm struck by how much courage she must have had and how much courage the congregation had to persevere and to create such a beautiful building and place of worship. So this is an honor and privilege to do this, and I'm very happy that you brought this forward. Thank you.
Thank you. And I believe that was everyone. I'll, I'll. Councilmember Rosenberg, did I see your hand or no? Oh, okay. Thank you. And I'll just add a few comments. Thank you. Bloomington is richer when we tell these stories. We are better when we tell these stories. And I'm grateful to be a very, very small part. So thank you for the opportunity to hear those stories. Thank you for the opportunity to offer this protection. So with that, shall we move to a vote? Will the deputy clerk please call the roll on ordinance 22-21? Councilmember, Councilmember Flaherty?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Rosenberg?
Yes.
Volin?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Scambaluri?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
And that passes 900. Congratulations and our heartfelt thanks. With that, let's move on to our next item.
Now, Chair. I move that Resolution 2215 be introduced and read by the deputy clerk by title and synopsis only.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. So. Deputy Clerk Stoll, will you call the roll on the motion to introduce, please? Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Rosenberg?
Yes.
Volin?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Scambaluri?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Flaherty? That passes 80. And will the clerk please read?
Resolution 2215, expressing support for the protection of reproductive rights. Synopsis: This resolution is sponsored by Councilmember Sandberg, Councilmember Scambaluri, Councilmember Piedmont Smith, Councilmember Smith, and Councilmember Volin. It expresses concern about the U.S. Supreme Court's decision in Dobbs versus Jackson, Women's Health Organization, Indiana's recent passage of Senate Bill 1, and the expected effects of these actions. It states that the legislative policy of the city of Bloomington will be to support efforts to protect reproductive rights.
Thank you.
Now, Chair, I move the Resolution 2215 be adopted.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. Who would like to present? We have several cosponsors on this particular resolution. Councilmember Sandberg, let's start with you before moving to our cosponsors.
Yes, thank you. I am pleased to be one of five of my colleagues who are bringing this resolution forward. It is a resolution, and therefore, of course, it is nonbinding, but I think it is an important expression of our concern as leaders in this community to talk about the effects of what has happened recently in our nation and in our state. In January of 1973, when Roe v. Wade became established law in the country that protected privacy and women's right to choose her own reproductive future, I was a young woman. I was an undergraduate student here at Indiana University, and I know from having come of age in that particular time of, of great change in our nation, that there were botched, illegal abortions. There were self-administered abortions that took the lives of many women, that damaged the health of many women, before Roe v. Wade became established law in this nation. So for those of us that have been on this planet long enough to actually experience some of those devastating effects, and then for having marched for all these many decades with respect to the rights of women, reproductive choice, the abilities of families to determine their own futures, to see that stare decisis, that established law rolled back in June of this year by the Supreme Court, was devastating enough. And then to have in August, our own General Assembly make a near ban on abortions in the community throughout the state. We, as representatives of the city, have a right to be concerned about the consequences. And again, the consequences could come in many different forms. It may take time for us to see it, but I do feel it's going to have the most devastating impacts on low-income families. It always does. People of means are going to be able to manage. People who don't are going to be forced with no choices, no opportunities to determine their own futures, their own health, their own privacy. And to the extent that the city of Bloomington does have a responsibility for the health and safety of this community, I think it is an important statement for us to make as a council, and again, I'm happy to be a sponsor. Thank you.
Thank you. Would fellow sponsors like to comment as well? Seeing no additional comment at this time, let's go to the public for comment. Mr. Lucas, could you do the announcement on Zoom, please?
Yes.
And those in chambers are welcome to approach the podium.
At this time, if there are any members of the public that wish to comment on Resolution 2215, please use the raise hand feature to indicate your desire to speak. You can find the raise hand button in your control bar under the reactions tab or the more tab, or you can simply send a chat to the meeting host to let us know you'd like to comment. And I do see one, one hand raised at the moment. There may be others, but one at the moment.
Let's begin here in council chambers. Mr. Bender? Welcome. You'll have three minutes.
Hi, again, just for the record, David Wolf Bender, Director of City Relations for Indiana University Student Government. I have a statement here to read from the IUSG President and Vice President. They were here this evening, but had another commitment that they had to go on to. To the members of the Bloomington City Council and to the leaders of Bloomington, we were saddened, angered, and disappointed by the Supreme Court's decision to overturn the 1973 decision of Roe v. Wade. It is an egregious attack on the rights of people who can conceive and threatens the lives of countless people across our nation. This decision disproportionately impacts low-income communities and people of color while simultaneously opening the floodgates to future restrictions regarding access to contraceptives, LGBTQ plus rights, and more. After Senate Bill 1 was signed into law, IU Student Government recognizes the need to serve our student body more than ever. IU Student Government will continue to advocate for students and people to have the right to privacy and reproductive rights on a local, state, and federal level, as well as pursuing initiatives that directly address the issues that students face on campus. IUSG supports the council's resolution this evening and encourages its passage. We hope the administration and the council will continue to support organizations across our city and our county that promote women's health care. Thank you for your time. Signed, IUSG President Kyle Seibert and IUSG Vice President Belle Pastore. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bender. Mr. Lucas, who do we have on Zoom?
Yes, we have Shelby Ford, who should now be able to unmute.
Welcome. If you would, share your name for the record, please, or confirm your name for the record, and then you'll have three minutes. Please go ahead.
All right. I'm Shelby Ford, and thank you guys for your time today. I'm attending along with my fellow Commissioner Renee Miller. We are here today to support this resolution and express our hope for further action. We, as members of the Community Advisory on Public Safety Commission, are working on a resolution titled Protection of Reproductive Rights and Freedoms. In the wake of overturning of Roe versus Wade- In the wake of overturn, of the overturning of Roe versus Wade in Indiana Senate Bill 1, we believe within the context of public safety, it is important to continue finding ways to protect the rights of every citizen and provide support when needed. While we understand budgeting has to go through a specific process, our resolution will make some recommendations around funding to potential, to potentially help our fellow Bloomingtonians with reproductive health care, gynecological health care, and parenting-related expenses, expanding beyond the local grant programs currently available. As the City Council and Mayor of Bloomington has expressed its support for legislations in protecting reproductive rights and health decisions, we hope to provide additional policy ideas to honor the rights of bodily autonomy and health care. We appreciate your continued recognition of the negative impacts of Senate Bill 1 with Resolution 2215 on the Florida day. Once our resolution is passed through the commission, staff will be bringing it to your attention. We hope you'll be able to mirror a similar resolution to protect human rights for those in our community. Thank you so much for your time, and hopefully we'll be in contact in the future.
Thank you, Ms. Ford. And did I understand correctly that Commissioner Miller wanted to speak as well?
I do not believe so. I think we are just, we both have been working on this resolution, so I wanted to mention her.
Great. Thank you for clarifying. So, Mr. Lucas, do we have additional commenters on Zoom?
I don't see any additional comment at this moment.
Okay. And anyone else in public, here in council chambers? Okay. Seeing none, let's come back to council for any final comments before moving to a vote. Additional comments? Councilmember Sims?
Thank you. Just briefly, I was one of the signers for the local public official statement on the reversal of Roe versus Wade that was made on July 1st of this year. And this resolution that we're talking about tonight is very supportive in the same vein as that statement, so I wholeheartedly support it as well. And in the future, there will be more discussions, more documents, I do believe, more positions taken in support of what we're talking about here this evening, and I'll be happy to support it as well during that time. So I will plan to support this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional comments? Councilmember Rallo?
Yes, thanks for the authors of this and the, and the cosponsors for bringing it. A major step backwards for this country occurred. It is an abrogation of the Equal Protection Clause, it seems to me and to many. And it is a blatant attack on reproductive autonomy of women. And hopefully, we can prevail in the end. But in the meantime, I'm supportive of those efforts that are underway to lobby the State House and to develop similar resolutions around the state to hopefully reverse the decision at some point. And I believe that in the end, we will prevail. So thank you for this important step for our community.
Thank you. Additional comments from council before moving to a vote? Seeing none, will the deputy clerk please call the roll on Resolution 2215?
We have some comments here on Zoom land.
Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize. I knew I'd do that tonight. Councilmember Piedmont Smith, please.
Thank you very much. I want to thank my cosponsors who worked on the wording of the resolution. And I, I mean, there are just so many, so many reasons that it's important to actively fight against the Dobbs decision and Senate Bill 1. And I'll just mention one, and that is the, the wide impact this, this is going to have, these restrictions are going to have on our communities, not just individual women or people who can become pregnant, but on our communities as a whole. If, if someone becomes pregnant and is not financially or emotionally or even physically prepared to raise a child, that burden falls upon our community. And it is often because of lack of proper healthcare resources in the first place that, that some of these pregnancies occur. And so this is just perpetuating circumstances in which it is not, it's not conducive to raising a child. And furthermore, somebody who becomes pregnant at a time when they, you know, did not plan to, that can cut somebody's educational progress, their career progress, their ability to contribute to our community. It, it really cuts short their ability to be successful in, in their life as a community member if it's an unplanned pregnancy that they are not prepared for. And as Councilmember Sandberg said at the outset, this is going to be a particularly hard burden for people who do not have as high income or the opportunity to pay with time and money to go out of state to have a procedure, a necessary medical procedure performed. The lawmakers who made this decision need to, well, they, as I believe our esteemed State Senator Shelley Yoder has said, none of the senators who voted for this are actually going to be personally affected because they are not able to be pregnant themselves, either because of age or gender. And it's, it's just outrageous to me that they can dictate a health care decision that needs to be between an individual and their health care provider. So this is kind of the least we can do, we can do, but it, it has been a measure that has been called for by several of my constituents, and so I'm very glad we're doing it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Sandberg? Councilmember Sandberg, you're muted.
Thank you. Not the church, not the state, women will decide our fate. How many times have I had to chant that throughout these decades? And at this particular time, when this law has been reversed in a devastating fashion, I think we are left with several options. They're not good options, but they are the only ones that we have, and that is to make sure that family planning, affordable and safe birth control, programs that help women to get the health care that they need and they deserve, and it is their right to be able to determine their own health care futures. I think that's the next chapter. I'm not as optimistic as maybe some of my colleagues are that we're going to be changing this in the near future, but we're going to be living in a completely different environment from the protections that my generation has certainly appreciated and fought hard for in this new decade, in this new time of restricting rights, taking rights away. It is abhorrent to me. But yet, as representatives of this city, it is now our opportunity to provide as much as we can, we've always been supportive of, of Planned Parenthood and their birth control options and all options in helping women instead of hurting women, instead of taking restrictions away, or, or anyone who finds themselves with an unwanted or an unplanned pregnancy who needs to have other options. So that is the next step, is to do all we can as a city to provide as many health care services as we can to help families avoid the situation that they are now going to be forced to be in. And it's going to have other outlying effects as well, we know that. But my main concern at this point is for our community and, and as much help as we can provide for, again, reproductive services. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional comments, either on Zoom or here in chambers? Okay, seeing none, let's go to Deputy Clerk Stoll, if you would, please call the roll on Resolution 2215.
Councilmember Piedmont Smith? Rosenberg? Volin?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Scambaluri?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
That passes 900. Thank you, everyone. We have no legislation for first readings this evening, so let's move into our second period of public comment. Maximum of 25 minutes is set aside for this particular section. Do we have individuals in chambers who would like to offer public comment? And Mr. Lucas, if you could extend the invitation on Zoom, please?
Yes, if there are members of the public on Zoom that have not already commented who would like to offer public comment on items not on tonight's agenda, you can use the raise hand feature to indicate your desire to speak.
And I'm not seeing anyone here in chambers.
See no takers on Zoom.
Okay, we'll give it just another moment. And seeing none, let's take up matters of council schedule. Mr. Lucas?
Yes, thank you. Because the council had no legislation for first readings on tonight's agenda, there will be no business on next week's committee agenda. And so the council tonight, if it wishes, could make a motion to cancel next week's committee meeting.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Oh, we need a roll call vote, yes. Is there any discussion? Seeing none. Madam Deputy Clerk, if you would call the roll, please.
Councilmember Rosenberg? Volin?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Scambaluri?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Okay, and that is 900. Thank you. So we will not have committee at all scheduled for next Wednesday? Mr. Lucas, additional items?
Yes. And so while the council may have an unexpected night off next Wednesday, just a few reminders of some upcoming business, there is a scheduled work session next Friday, August 26th, to hear about items of legislation that may be ready to come forward during the first legislative cycle in September. At this time, those, those items may include, I believe Councilmember Volin mentioned a resolution that he's working on regarding an extension of BT service outside of city limits. There may be an ordinance related to the Jackson Creek Trail Extension Project and some related utilities issues that the administration is bringing forward. And finally, there is a right-of-way vacation request that the council will be receiving from a petitioner that will be ready for preview that, during that work session. So those are the items I know of at this point in time. This is a week early, than, earlier than I normally give, give a preview, so there may be others added to that work session. But at this time, I, I am planning on, on moving forward with that work session unless I hear otherwise tonight.
Okay. And did you want to comment on Budget Week as well?
Yes, so we'll, we'll proceed with that work session. Just a reminder, too, that the following week, beginning on August 29th, will mark the start of Budget Week. The council is scheduled to hold budget hearings, departmental budget hearings, Monday through Thursday that week, beginning at 6 o'clock, not 6:30, 6 o'clock each night. And budget books, as I understand from the Controller's Office, will be available no later than next Friday, the 26th. For council members that want hard copies of those books, please let us know. We'll, we'll have copies available. There will also be a copy for public inspection on file with the Clerk's Office, if, if any members of the public wish to look at that in hard copy. And of course, the Controller's Office will be making that available online at the city budget page. So lots to come in the, in the coming weeks. I believe that's all I have for now, unless there are questions.
Councilmember Rallo?
What latitude does the council have regarding the budget in terms of scheduling when it is due for the State Board of Accounts?
There are scheduled meetings under the council's annual schedule that could be changed. There are deadlines that the council has to operate within under the State Board of Accounts and the DLGF, well, state law. So I don't know how, what, what you're thinking, but early November is, is, I think the 1st of November is the absolute deadline.
Lieutenant Gill, for your question.
Councilmember Volin? Councilmember?
Yes, yeah, please.
Are you asking about Budget Week or about after Budget Week?
I'm, I'm just generally asking about when the budget, when we have to sign off on the budget, frankly, at this point. How much time do we have in order to essentially give our, or not, give our?
So, but you're, you're asking about flexibility in the regular sessions, not in the Budget Week? You're concerned about the overall budget?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
I, I will, I will state the council has a, a budget cycle scheduled for September 28th, which will entail both first reading and then a discussion of the budget legislation on the same night. And then two weeks after that, October the 12th, has a potential night to vote on the budget. Off the top of my head, it's either October 31st or November 1st for a final vote. And I know bumping up against that deadline gives Controller Underwood a lot of heartburn. So the current schedule has some cushion built in, but I know his, his recommendation would be, don't, don't go up to the, the cliff. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional matters of scheduling? Mr. Lucas?
No, unless there are other questions from, from council.
Additional questions? Okay.
Yes.
That, oh, I'm sorry.
With respect to Mr. Rallo's question, if he wants to make changes in any way to the budget meeting schedule, because there has to be, there's, there's more extensive notice requirements, when do you think his deadline would be to file for changes?
I believe the September 28th date will serve as the required public hearing. As I understand, the Controller's Office has a 10-day notice to publish ahead of that, so September 28th, I believe, is the last date that they could potentially put that notice out ahead of the public hearing on September 28th.
Okay.
The October 12th date is currently slated as the adoption hearing, which is also a date, I believe, included on that notice. So the sooner you know of any potential changes you'd like to propose, the better.
Okay, thank you.
One more question.
Councilmember Rallo?
May I? Just for clarity, so the public hearing on September 28th, we spoke about this earlier today, is amenable to Zooming. Is that correct? Even though it's, it's a budget-related matter, because we don't take action on that date, we would take it on October 12th would be our, our vote? That has to, we have to attend that if we want to participate?
As I, yes, as I understand the new state requirements and restrictions on electronic participation, the council, a, a member is, is not allowed to participate in a meeting if the council is attempting to take final action on a number of items, but one of those items is adopting a budget. The council wouldn't be able to take final action on September 28th, so happy to, to seek out some confirmation of this, but my take is the council, council members could participate electronically on September 28th, would need to be here in person during the, the adoption hearing when the final vote is taken on the budget, to be able to participate.
Thank you for that clarification, and let us know if there's, you find anything different.
Thank you. Additional items? If not, I will, that concludes our business. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Have a good evening, everyone. Have a good evening, everyone.